Alright guys, and we are back for... Just as you remember with that doc, and um, we are indeed aiming for some uh, interesting times. Um... What was that? Oh... Okay, yeah, 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 okay, okay. Damn, they're right there.
Well, look who it is, I'm ready up at Charles, SSS.
Kill it.
Looks on your faces tell me, you have some intel about what could happen today? Might it... Might it have something to do with your invitation aboard the Isel perhaps? I beg your pardon? We should've expected you would already know. Geez, how do yourses is even get this stuff? Settle down, it isn't anything to fret on. I am curious though, did you hear anything of note? It's only some friendly advice, nothing more. There's still plenty we have to figure out for ourselves. Is that right? Well, the same could be said of myself. What? I was merely thinking aloud. I can envision as many scenarios as I like, but that doesn't mean any of them will come to pack. With so many conflicting motives, there's still much we don't know. The truth, that that's true of everyone working here today. Will today be the day the first domino falls, or is that juncture yet to come? Who can really say at this point in time? I think I understand what you're getting at, but still... Either way, she's right on the minute. The only thing I'll add, is that my role today is nothing more than that of a presidential guardian and keeper. She said "I'm not getting involved." In that sense, you could almost consider us as colleagues. Let's say we put aside our allegiances and simply watch how today unfolds. Beyond that, I have no further comments to make for the moment. Okay, fair enough, thanks for the information.
Oh, that leads to the conference, okay, nevermind, nevermind, okay, okay, okay. Okay, okay, not bad, not bad. Bro... It's Toa, y'all. It's Toa. It's good to see you again, Major Vandy. Have you noticed anything out of the ordinary yet?
Ah... Hello there, SSS. It's hardly enough reason to let our guards down, but things have been calm thus far. Even the discourse of the conference itself has been pretty simple. I've been admittedly impressed by how smooth things are going. If the conference continues to go well, that'll at least alleviate some of the stress on the prince's shoulder.
Is everything okay? You seem to have a lot on your mind.
I suppose you could say that. In a sense, we've only come thus far because of the seeds he chose to sow. But never mind that. What matters most right now is our duties at the conference. I have a role to play as the prince's escort. Just as I'm sure you all have your own, keeping the conference secure.
Right, that much is for certain. Good afternoon, everyone. Well, if it isn't the SSS. I take it that you've been securing the conference floors for everyone? That's right, we managed to eke out an assignment as part of the security. So this room is where they've stashed all the big guns, huh? Metaphorically speaking, of course. I bet every last person in here is a rank and officer. Correctly, all accounts, this room alone can prevent a, a major incident. Absolutely, not to mention seeing Captain Shore as a swordsman ship. I've heard it's as fearsome as it is ever. Oh, you're far too kind, it's nothing so extraordinary. That being said, no matter what happens, no one will lay so much as a finger on her highness, I swear it, yeah. She guards Chloe, Claudia, with her life. Trust us to protect the conference room, and we will trust you to keep over, over the other floors. Of course, thank you. Whoa... Nah, bro. Does she have an illustration? Please! This is absolutely bonkers. This is absolutely bonkers, bro. Yo, if continuity was a game, it's this shit right here. This is insane, this is literally insane, bro! Having a nervous wreck all day, we know what Toa sounds like. And she got the eyes too, that's insane. But I can't let this opportunity go to waste, especially after Prince, all Prince Oliver... Alright, this is absolutely insane! Because this is pretty much letting us know that Prince Oliver was already helping out Thor's Military Academy. I love this game, bro, I fucking love this game, bro, this is absolutely insane. Most importantly, I'm here as a representative, see? She just said it, I'm here as a representative of Thors. I gotta pull myself together and chip in, we don't know, obviously, we wouldn't know what she's talking about now, but... What's a girl in a school uniform doing here? I did hear that a student was going to be accompanying the Imperial Government to the conference. Supposedly they're hoping to gain some real world experience, being one of the best and brightest of their academy, this must be her. Damn, here I was thinking someone just couldn't, someone couldn't find a babysitter. Somehow, I get the feeling she and I would have a lot to talk about. That might come to pass in post-Dill 3. She has to have skipped a grade or two, right? Well, you never know, that girl just might be around the same age as you and Lloyd. She's just short as a bitch. She seems like she's got a good head on her shoulders, so I guess she could be older than she looks. It would be nice to get to know her, but we're, we're pre, we're, we're a bit pressed for time today. Oh my god, it's our Toa. I saw Larry. This is crazy because... Falcon, I'm kinda tripping, and I say that because I, I played Tok, I, I barely played Tokyo Zanadu. And Tokyo Zanadu has a Toa in that game too, and she looks identical to this Toa, and I was like, alright, y'all. Alright, alright, y'all, y'all tripping. Y'all tripping, she looks exactly like Toa. Emmy exactly like Toa. I was like, alright, alright, I don't know what to think at this point. I don't know what to think at this point. We're trying to talk to all the important people, you know what I'm saying? Anybody who's anybody, you know what I mean? I saw Vice Commissioner Pierre muttering to himself, really, I hope he alright. I'm a little bit worried about him, to be honest. Right, check him out, let's shake it, shake it, shake it, shake it out, shake it out. Ah, I can't believe that woman would, no. I'm sure of it this time. Who's he, my brother? Excuse me? Vice Commissioner Pierre? Ay, yo Pierre, you wanna come out here? Bro... What? The SSS, oh joy.
Well, can I help you?
If I may ask, this Vice Commissioner, what, what are you doing? Tio, you can't just...
Oh, nothing. Nothing except my job as Director of the Security Command Room.
Huh? Since when? Come to think of it, I do recall seeing your name sprinkled around in some of our materials.
Ah, I see.
I gotta give, I, I keep forgetting, I gotta give Tio a monotone course, cuz she hasn't, she sometimes, she's, sometimes monotones.
I never read those, hence my confusion.
You what? Bruh, you real dude just hit the fish from spawn, bro, you what? Ah, here we go. We probably should've mentioned this off to you all sooner. Whoops. One question, if you're the head of security, why are you here instead of the commander? Taking a little break?
Please. Dudley has full authority while here on site, with my permission. So, you see, there's no reason for me to be in the command room, too many leaders spoil the group as it were. Thinking that however you like, as your superior, I know what is best for the operation. Now then, you six just focus on not getting in Dudley's way. Yes, sir.
This is where they put the lunchboxes, finally I can grab something to eat, ay. He trying to get him some grub, I ain't even gonna hold ya, I tell ya, bro. Captain Grant! A pleasure to see you. Hey, Grant, working hard? Good day, Sergeant Major Seeker, you, you as well, Sergeant Orlando. Well, I suppose neither of you is technically part of the CGF at this moment, right? That's true, but my leader's only temporary, you can address me by whatever you find easiest. Eh, I don't care either way. Are you two the only representatives from CGF on this floor? That we are, it's out of consideration for the dignities and members of the press, you might say. To Zell, I love that. Part of the CGF's orders for this assignment is to stay out of their sight and minimize exposure, hence the bare bones. Sounds like the reasoning goes deeper than that. It does, essentially, the decision is a way of titling around the two major powers. While the CGF's weaponry is restricted by state law, it still functions the same as any other state military. We stay within budget, but a great deal of funding goes towards maintaining and improving arms we're allowed to hack. Those expenditures would be an easy point of contention if they were out in the open during the conference. Out of sight, out of mind, in other words. The policy can be quite fickle mistress. All true, but I try not to think about it too much. In the end, the both of us are only up here for opinions to say. Still, there's an entire company of guardsmen one story below, ready to mobilize in a moment, so... Shouldn't anything happen, they'll be on this floor within seconds, rest assured. Into now. We'll be counting on you, remember, if it comes to that. Alright, that was pretty cool. Okay... Look who it is, wait, who's this? Detective, we still haven't caught wind of any terrorist activity, but it's too optimistic to hope they called off their plans in the face of flawless security. With that, we could be so lucky. There you all are. Have you noticed anything amiss? No, not yet. The line over there gives you a security overview of the entire tower at once, huh? Correct. We have access to every critical area of the building in real time, that includes the conference room, of course. Thankfully, this tower is equipped with the most advanced security. Over continent, that's insane. Numerous locations are beginning to incorporate video surveillance, as I recall from the IBC, the Ordo store. I've never seen such a large quantity of them in one place, however. However, how many, how many there are is only half of it. The fact this technology even exists is amazing on its own. I wouldn't be surprised to see their use to survey areas outside the city someday. CGF days might be numbered, no will. I don't think it'll ever be that soon. How wise they become is gonna depend on the public's approval. Just digressions aside, there are more than, more than welcome convenience for this assignment. Without any leaves on the terrorists' plans, all we can do is do things in the blood the moment they strike, whether right before or just after. That's why we have to keep our eyes sharp, we can't afford to overlook even the tiniest detail. If they come across anything suspicious, be sure to report it at once. Understood. Alright, now what's going on with him? The infrastructure we set up in here allows us to consolidate and parse every bit of security data that flows in, just like that. Plus, while the terminals here are limited, we're still able to access the database at CPD headquarters. Out. Should the need arise, we'll have detailed info on any suspicious characters available at our fingertips. Wow. They got a lot of shit going right, I'm not even gonna hold you. They got a lot of shit going for real. They got a lot of shit going for real, I ain't gonna hold you. Oh wow, alright, so look, we seen this person outside, and this is uh, what's his name, Raines, right? I was almost sitting Niall. Yeah, Raines, there we go. Good to see you, SSS. Hey, if it isn't Lloyd and Company, Princess security, bro, I ain't gonna hold you. Feels like we've been waiting forever for the shake conference to kick off, don't it? It's the main event of all main events, Crossbell's leadership and representatives from four nearby countries and up in man's of international discourse. And of course, a big to-do, like this demands a prime time venue, or K's Saturday, the continent's first true skyscraper. Can you feel the nerves in the air? I'm so tense that my heart's about to jump out of my chest. I definitely said attention, but honestly, you don't look the least bit nervous to me. I suspect the nerves are coming less, from her and more from her future perspective victim slash interviews. Tio, you're back, and you brought the trademark snark one on with you too, exactly. I'll admit, I'm not so much anxious as I am giddy, but enough about that. There's someone I wanna introduce you to, meet Noticia. This is, this is the SSS, this is the girl we saw outside the uh, she was outside Orca Tower when we first pulled up. Nice to meet you, I've seen you all up in the papers before, you look like an even finer team and person. I'm Noticia, a reporter... Why the fuck did I re- I don't know why I didn't recognize her. Ella Burne? What? Happy to be of service. I've heard the liberal news in service, it's the largest publication in the kingdom. Eh, that's right. They've also been getting a lot of attention in the journalism world for another reason. Two of their own reporters. We know who the fuck they talking about. They talking about Niall, and I just mentioned Niall, which is so weird. They're talking about Niall, and um, I don't know if her name... Her name ain't Dorothy, is it? God, I forgot her name! The Fulitzer, isn't that the prize that Neo, Neo Person won a few years back? It's given to the continent's most outstanding journalists every year, if I remember right. And so why? Her name was Dorothy. I don't know why, see, the thing is, Cole still was fucking me up, I thought that since there's a Dorothy in a literature club who all about that, you know, that, that, you know, I ain't gonna say, but you know, I just knew I was wrong about that, but it was Niall and Dorothy. And I, I, I happened to see that, you know why they won, they won, they won because they did that, they did a report on that whole liberal incident. Like, that was, that was cra- that was absolutely cra, bruh. But Niall and Dorothy, of course. Niall's our ace reporter, and Dorothy's our brilliant camera woman, exactly, remember she was taking pictures of their ship before it took off? So the kingdom took home the crown last year, huh? Two guesses as to what, so what, yeah, you, you, you heard me say it, two guesses as to what the prize winning story was? Gotta go, been about the strange incident, yeah, you heard me say it, the liberal incident, the, 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 what, what is it, what is it, the, the right terminology for it? The oval shutdown phenomenon, yeah, that's what it was, the oval shutdown phenomenon. Right again. Technically speaking, everything they covered leading up to the incident factors into the decision too, trust me, I know. I see, they sound very impressive. Yeah, I guess so, look at her, she hating. That doesn't mean we'll just lie down and let them outshine us, so look at her hating. It's every reporter's dream to win a fellow's prize, at least once in their career. And if you wanna win the next one, then you better get the best scoop, oh, you're definitely finna get it, Grace, cuz some shit bout to go down here, let's be real. You got that, Raines, we can't let those news animals get the jump on us. I don't know what it is, but when I look at her, I think about Maya Amano from Persona 2 Eternal. Yes, ma'am. If Grace gets any more fired up, the oval sprinkle system might go off. Ah, that's how she can behave herself, at least. Nah, fuck with Grace, Grace a cutie. Grace is a fucking cutie in that. The Imperial Chronicle Reporter. I've heard too many positive remarks about the Crossbell Police in the past. However, seeing how tight the building's security is, I'm getting the exact opposite impression today. The only conclusion I can come to is the CPD's shortcomings are a result of their structure, not their people. Okay, that, that was actually pretty interesting. I'm Thompson from the Ardent Place. It's a pleasure to meet you, you're Photoshopper with the Tyrell Times, if I'm not mistaken. That's right, but I know, I'm still only a rookie tyran. Argue, okay, he's from Imperia. And where is he from? Tyrell. Tyrell, what is that? That's interesting. I don't know where Tyrell would be from. We're in rumors with the members of the press from each participating country. Journal privacy forbids them from exiting one of the conferences in a session. They should all be a carnival in there, feel free to enter if there's anything you need to confirm. Alright, that's one patrol down. Nothing unusual to report at the moment. Yep, so far, so good, we might as well make another look around, good plan. You know, I can't help but wonder if the conference is going smoothly. Me too, I know the mayor, speaker are doing their best, but that's a tough room they got in there. Bud, I, Chancellor, President, and President Roxanne will present the latest chat. That they do, wanna ask someone how it's been going during the inter- Uh-uh, the same day, at 3:05 AM. The trade conference finally reached its halfway point. Before the intermission officially began, the heads of state held a brief press conference for the media. Uh-oh. Ay, why not? Meanwhile, Lloyd and the others took the opportunity to speak with Mr. Grimwood, who fell ahead of the others. Why is that? Ah, that explains it, please be as encouraged as they are, the SSS was asked to assist with the security meeting. Exactly, I'm not sure how much of a difference we really make in the grand scheme of things, though we may only be additional pieces of peace of mind. Don't say you're so short, my friend, you're the team that ordered an assassination attempt on our previous mayor, true enough. It's reassuring to have you all here. That's kind of you to say. Yeah, thanks for the vote of confidence. How is the conference going, Mr. Grimwood? Things appear to be proceeding slowly thus far. As a fair assessment, all except slow, steady. Participating nations have already agreed to several treaties. Their efforts are truly beginning to pay off for all of them. Ain't good. That puts my mind at ease. Slow, but steady for now, you say? Do you think things might get rocky in the second half? Right. Why did he say that? Is this something you're concerned about? I doubt I hold the jurisdiction to tell you this, as an observer on the sideline, but the focal point of the first half of the conference centered on proposals that affect such fields as shredding and fire. The second half, on the other hand, will be reserved for proposals from each of the various heads of state. This is undoubtedly when the topic of Crossbell's defenses will be addressed, oh geez. Oh geez. But if they do that, it'll only be a matter of time before foreign military presence enters the equation. What about the non-aggression pact? It's only been two years since it was signed. See Queen Alicia? The Queen of, the, the Queen of Liberal, aka Queen Alicia, did push the pact into being with Crossbell's best interests in mind. Technically, two of the nations participating today never signed the pact, with Imperial and well, Crossbell itself. In light of that, it's only inevitable that a new continental security framework will be discussed. Likely so, my grandfather shares your concerns and expectations, bud. We're drafting up a new pact, and having Crossbell sign it this time, that'd be the simplest solution. That's what I was thinking, and it seemed like that's what Chloe was thinking too. It has to be, they could model the framework after the non-aggression pact and prohibit military force between all the nations. Oh? I get it. Crossbell isn't technically a nation. The Empire and Republic only recognize Crossbell as an autonomous state. That's so fucked up. As you say, Crossbell lacks the sovereignty to enter an international treaty, it's like, it's almost as if Crossbell can't stand up for itself, bruh, which is absolutely insane. Economic arrangements alone are not grounds for the state to enter into a formal pact as its only entity. That final line we tread is precisely what puts the state of Crossbell in jeopardy, oh my god. Sort of getting it, but this definitely is a cut and dry. Excuse me, but I have something I would like to add. Crossbell is not the only autonomous state on the continent. Ooh, what you mean, Tio? Hmmmm, but look what happened though, but look what happened though. So we know North Ambria got annexed, shoutouts to my baby Sarah. Cuz that's where Sarah's from, we know North Ambria got annexed. I'm not sure about Lamon, but, that's crazy. Other states also barred from entering into international treaties. No, they're not. It's true that each state has their own set of historical circumstances, as to why they remain states instead of forming nations. However, each has also been recognized by the major powers as independent with sovereignty on their own. So they have equal standing? Exactly, they're treated very different from Crossbell, that's fucked up. Primarily because they're sovereignty, yep, Arteria. Recognized by the Holy City of Arteria. The Holy City of Arteria, as in the highest seat of the Serdian Church? Why would you know that, Ellie? Yes, as a city would, I think she did, they did say she went to Arteria, plus she knows Reese, so like, bruh. Arteria's territory is small, but the church holds religious authority across the continent. Numerous autonomous states and free cities owe their establishment to the church's aid. And you have Crossbell, whose autonomy was gifted to it by Aragonia and Cal, which is absolutely insane. That's how we're in the unique position of having two cesarean powers above. That historically led to Crossbell being dragged into their complex time and time again. If Crossbell only had a modicum of sovereignty, we could, we could work through the situation. If consent from both countries is what it will take for that to become a reality, then there's basically no hope. I wish I could disagree. But that way, it does seem bleak. It advances the topic of error. I would expect the chancellor and president to have their ideas regarding Crossbell's security. Naturally, each country's terms for their respective proposals will differ vastly. The speaker and mayor will have to be wary of what we stand to gain or lose. Damn. About it, I don't know. I'm sorry, I'm sure you already have enough on your mind. Remember that's Neek or McDowell is no stranger to matter such a thief. And I get that since Mayor Coy still has some cards to play himself. Think he got a plan? But what could that be? I don't know, but think of this myself, nevertheless, it could very well... Uh-oh. Sorry, I gotta take this. As it says, Lloyd Bennett speaking. Dudley.
The press conference is concluded. The dignitaries are now headed to thirty-six floor. Where are you?
Oh, we're still in the break room on the thirty-four. Is there something you needed us to do?
Yeah. We were contacted by Chancellor Osborne and what?
Huh? We were, we, wait. We were contacted by both Osborne and Roxman? They each requested to speak to the SSS?
Nah, dog.
Nah, dog. They what?
Different who they are. I hope you understand. We're in no position to turn them down. The SSS is to visit the bulk of them during the intermission, and that's an order. Oh, no. The president is staying in the furthest room of the west wing corridor, while the chancellor is in the first of the east.
Hold on a sec, bro, hold on. I get that we can't refuse, but why ask for us? This is a lot of pressure, Dudley.
Don't be such a child, Banyese. This is an excellent opportunity to get some insight on what each side is after.
That is true.
That is true.
That's true. Okay, we'll head there right away.
Lean on McDowell if the going gets rough. She's the one on your team. Best suited to be a dead bear, yeah. She definitely got the silver tongue.
She definitely has the silver tongue, Anapus.
Report to me once you're finished.
Understood. What was that about, Lord?
You were getting real wild up there.
What's going on, buddy?
Alright, y'all. Brace yourselves. Lord explained to the others that both Chancellor Osborne and Roxman have requested a private audience with them.
Even Grimwood? Excuse me?
Good show. Not that I can discern. He seems entirely serious.
This is certainly a surprise. The SSS's name is more well-known than I thought.
I don't know about all that. I suspect it's because we're familiar with several members of their personnel. That's the only reason for their interest in us that I can make of it.
You might be on to something.
Regardless of the reason, there's no way we could possibly decline.
Ah, don't I know it. Let's head up to the thirty-six floor. Dudley said their rooms are on the furthest ends of the east of West Wing. We don't want to keep them waiting.
Roger. Yes, sir.
Aw, shit. I don't know what to do with this. How many times must I tell you? The press isn't allowed past here. It's still in the mission, though, right? Can't you just, you know, look the other way? We promise we only want to take a few photos. They won't even know we're there. That's right. I can go back to Grace empty-handed. Please let us through. Persistent as ever. Good luck trying to tell a reporter where they can and can't go. Well, as long as no one's trying to physically force them right through, they're not breaking any rules. I guess so. This is just all a part of being a member of the press, right?
Anyway, we may as well give up any hope of using elevators right now.
Damn. That sucks. What, what floor is it? Is that Ariel's Killuka? I believe so. Wha- what could they be talking about?
Nearly a year it's gone by since she left the kill. Are you adjusting well to your new job?
More or less. Though the workload is so much heavier, it doesn't even begin to compare.
So I imagine.
And how is Shizuku been?
Cheerful as ever, though sometimes I feel as though she's a bit too accommodating for a child. She was recently blessed with a wonderful friend as well. Another that she smiles more often than since then.
Aw, that's good to hear.
It's already been half a decade since Saya's passing, huh? Not to mention six years since our first meeting.
That's right, six years.
You were wandering the continent, came across Saya and Crossbell by chance.
Wow!
As I remember it, she assisted you stay with our family while you were in town, no matter how much you tried to refuse. Imagine my surprise when I saw you working for the brace again on the barrel three years later.
The guy does some serious weight. You never quite know what threads will end up tying people together. I never figured the hospitality the two of you showed me back then. My only regret is that I was able to return the favor to her at home.
There's no need to dwell. The fact that you remember it, to this day, will be more than enough for some.
Damn. Sounds like those two knew each other before they met the real deal. Evidently so, but I feel like it would be rude to listen any further.
I agree. We should leave before they interrupt me.
But I was interested.
I'm alive.
I didn't know she knew him. That's... What? What? Is that Kanye?
Yeah.
I see. And that's why when, when you ran into Lucy.
Yep. I was only running for area on, on business too.
And she caught wind.
I tried to run, but she caught me. Yeesh, I must be losing my touch.
Can you even guess how many bumps over the head she gave me?
Not one. She hugged you and said with tears in her eyes, didn't she?
Damn. I can tell exactly how Lucy feels, you know? What song is this? What song is this? She's probably well aware of just how dangerous your day-to-day is. What song is this? I know it. I'm sure she's been worried sick.
Man, a woman's intuition is no joke. Makes my spine tingle.
I never do know how to handle them. Maybe, but you brought it upon yourself.
This really does take me back. Been so long since I've seen Leo too. I'd love for us to have a reunion.
Why the long face, Detective? Isn't this the part where you say, "Yeah, let's have a bash at Michelin and party till we drop"?
Not a bad impression. Well, promises, but I see what I can do. Just don't hold your breath, alright?
I know, but she won't be able to stop me from looking forward to it anyway.
Now then, I should be going. If you please, please excuse me. I'm proud, but hey, don't forget to say hi to Seeg for me. I still owe him that salami.
Damn, she's really coming to her own. The bro couldn't ask for a better crown, Princess. You guys think so too, right? Like, nah, I seen y'all back there. Bust. Sorry, we didn't mean to eavesdrop. We, we didn't hear much, I assure you. Didn't, didn't you, Ellie? You seemed really invested in the relationship where I was standing. Damn, Tio! T- Tio! Well, like, she ain't the only one. You and the princess sure seem close. What's the story there? I was her upperclassman. Oh, that's right. I forgot about that. I forgot about that. I forgot about that, when they was showing him like, running away, al- always running away from school and shit. I forgot about that. See, prep. I mean, not, not Sunday school, but Genius Royal Academy to be specific. Right, that's one of Libero's most prestigious institutions, isn't it? That's right. It's not unheard of them, six-star students from abroad, but did you study there on taxpayers' money?
Nah, old man Gillian paid my tuition out of pocket.
Yeah. That's about time I hit the old dusty trail. I'll be saying that. Oh, that reminds me, you got called in the top-of-the-head honchos, right? They're both real pains in the ass to deal with, so good luck in there. What? Could it be any more sketchy if he tried? Who'd have thought the next queen of Libero went to school with an imperial spot? Truth is, science is a fiction, as they say. But in the case, we can't forget that he's the subordinate of what nine chancellor. That's what he's after presently. They will have to figure it out for ourselves. Alright, so we're gonna go ahead and end the episode off here. Perfect, perfect, perfect time I was to ever ask for him. We're gonna go ahead and end the episode off here. We just got, we pretty much just got requested from Ambassador Chancellor Osborne and Mr. Roxman, which I don't know much about him, but we know about that bitch-ass chancellor. So we're gonna go ahead and end the episode off here. If you enjoyed this video, go ahead and leave a like, hit that like button. Go ahead and leave a comment if you've played any of the Trails games, and if you did, which ones did you play? And subscribe so you can see cool Japanese RPG content like this. And we'll be back with more Trail Sager, but until then, I'll catch you. You guys, later.